Amen.
I plead with you sincerely that the United States of America and to your public privilege stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have public comments, we have from a longtime county employee to this will be in his last meeting, and I think we should acknowledge Carmine Scartis. They all have to, not be ologized, that's not the right.
Don't do that, please.
Carmine, I just have worked with you now for seven years, and it has been an honor to work with you, and I know you have twenty, how many year?
Seven.
Twenty-seven years with our county, and you have done with your department, a fantastic job. You've put together a team that the whole state looks at and says, "How did you do that?" And you've really done an absolutely fantastic job, and we appreciate all you've done, and we wish you the best of luck in your retirement and good health. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmine. Thank you, Chris Porter Joyce. Public comment, Amy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The public comment portion of our meeting provides reference and taxpayers of Butler County a reasonable opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the Board prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The Chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal attacks on the character or reputation of county employees, department heads, or any official will be tolerated. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the Chair. I'll call the names in the order that they appear on the sign-up sheet, and when you approach the podium, please state your name and your municipality of residence. Jane Zechstein.
James Zechstein, Butler Township. Today is the final day of 2014. Today marks the end of my third year in office. I'm grateful to be able to be afforded this opportunity to serve the people of Butler County. Being elected Commissioner is a managerial job, not a legislative one. Sometimes managers make decisions not everyone likes. This is the nature of the position. A Commissioner's job is to evaluate county expenditures, new reuse buildings, county services, wages, benefits, and the number of new employees for the benefit of the county at large. Now, I know I'm not the most tactful person around. I came to this very podium every two weeks for over four years before being elected to office. I researched why I felt government needed reform, and I spoke about those injustices in the public and in an open, honest manner. If I have offended a few for the benefit of the many, I apologize to those few, but I am carrying out the job those elected to do and promised to carry out before being elected. The electorate did not buy a pick and poke. The county's long-term power structure did not appreciate the people's choice. They knew the electorate in Butler County made a terrible mistake. Those in power set out to prove their theory at any cost. Those in power could not and would not accept the choice of them buying for the people, as set forth in the Constitution and Bill of Rights. Those in charge envisioned that by degrading, falsely accusing, and bullying, they could overturn the election at Butler County's expense. They were mistaken. I'm a pragmatist of American history. In World War II, we had many different generals that led in many different styles. History reflects that their unique personalities, they all gained, through their unique personalities, they all gained the majority of men's respect. The key being the majority, not all. But they were all great generals of their era. Douglas MacArthur, Omar Bradley, George Patton, Dwight Eisenhower, among others. In no way am I trying to make a direct comparison to myself, but we can all learn lessons about how these great men led others, their leadership styles, their roles in battles, and why the majority of the troops respected them. History repeats itself, and we can learn from others' accomplishments and mistakes. I'm looking forward to this new year with hope and optimism that this year will be better than the last. My resolution is to continue to learn and grow and improve as your Commissioner, and continue with open and honest transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you, Eversole. Peggy Eversole, Fennel Sex Township. First of all, Carmine, best wishes and your retirement. County's budget is before the Commissioners for approval today. Human Services Department is part of today's budget. Those individuals most vulnerable need assistance all year long. Some individuals and families might be your neighbors. Local food banks need to be replenished not only for the holiday season. Homeless shelters and victim shelters need clothing and supplies all year round. If you're looking for a New Year's resolution, resolve to make it your mission to adopt an individual or family or human service organization for the new year. Also remember, volunteering your time would also be a great New Year's resolution.
Thank you.
Mark Wiedenisky.
Hi, Mark.
Thank you. No taxes increased for next year, that's great. Great news. I know it's always tough. I don't know if there's anything Commissioners can do about this that would help Butler County. One of our national laws is we can, we're not allowed to export oil. They get about $10 more a barrel for exported oil, and as you know, we're producing a lot of those liquids in Butler County now. And if we could, if we could keep along with exporting oil, I think that would help our job situation in Butler County. Also, I want to say, I wanted to mention about, I saw the dog department is on the agenda. I think that's a great idea. I run, you know, I own the apartment, North Park, about once a week, and that dog park is always full down there. It gets you quite a bit. Okay, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. You're right, we have nothing to say about how much we want to weigh it for. We all have to go through the Commissioners' duties. Next?
That's all for public comment.
All right, we have minutes from December 8th and December 10th. Make the motion, Mr. Chairman. And the motions approved, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Proximations?
None this morning, sir.
Old business?
Also none.
New business?
Under new business, the first item is the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Meisler.
Good morning, Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm just asking for your approval to enter into a contract with Adagio Health out of Pittsburgh. This is to conduct compliance checks for tobacco. We will, we are going to be asked to go to each and every store that sells cigarettes, and we will have a teenager go to the store and ask to buy cigarettes, and hence the compliance. They're either going to have to ask for ID, or if they sell them the cigarettes, we arrest them.
Can I apply for the teenager's job?
Apply.
I don't think you'll be accepting.
I don't think, you're right. We're looking at about 180 to 200 stores. The contract that they provided starts December 1st. Here we are, December 31st. But it ends June 30th, I believe, June 15th to 30th of 2015. And the solicitor's already reviewed it with a couple modifications that we'd have to sign up.
How many stores do you cover in a year?
Six months, we have about 180 to 200.
I'm just curious about this year, you say you have a teenager, and there's somebody that looks like a teenager. Can you actually have a teenager go in and try and buy?
Yes.
And are they an employee of the county?
No.
Are they just a volunteer?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
And what I didn't tell you, I apologize, is we're going to get $50 for each visit. So if you multiply that by, if there are 200 stores, that's $10,000.
We have a discussion.
So the teenager, you get $50, and the teenager is not paid anything?
I think the teenager is paid in the, the fun of it, because this is like undercover boss, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Undercover work.
Then my son works at the Meridian store, the store in Meridian. My son and daughter, they have done that, they passed, by the way. But they come in, I didn't know the Sheriff's Department does it. Is that typical?
Yes, we've done this for many, many years, but we work through CCR. CCR is just basically being the middleman, taking my money, no, taking our money. But we're direct, we're working directly with the Dog Health this time.
That's good, that's a good program.
Thank you. Anything else? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe you have a motion on the floor.
I make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I make the motion.
Thank you.
New Year's Eve, and I'm glad you're here.
Next, under the Coroner's Office, Coroner Young is asking approval of the Second Amendment to the October 20th, 2010 Professional Services Agreement with NMS Labs in Bull Road, Pennsylvania, to provide forensic toxicology testing services to the Coroner's Office. The term of the agreement is January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2017, and includes a 3% increase on current fees for routine toxicology panels and storage for one year on samples submitted for analysis. We ask your approval.
I make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you.
Next, under Emergency Services, Steve Weisshouse.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm going to ask for approval to enter into an agreement with Butler Health System to provide physical exams for the Hazmat Team members. As required under federal law, yearly exams are required. It'll be for $330 per exam, plus $50 for the exam, and x-rays not required. X-rays are required usually based on a respiratory questionnaire, based on exposure in the previous year. This would be for approximately 15 team members, and I say approximately because some of our team members have these as part of their normal job duties at work, so they will not require second of us. This would be 100% reimbursed through the Hazards Materials Emergency Preparedness Agreement. I ask for your approval on that.
Your motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Steve, are any of these county employees?
They're technically county employees, but they're all volunteers, they don't get paid for their services.
Okay.
So the only one paid for hazard, the hazard material team is Scott Alford.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, under Facilities and Operations, John Campbell.
Good morning, Commissioner. Today we ask for approval of agreement with Longstrom Business Division to provide internet service and static IP addresses for the Cranberry Township and Madison Streets with a monthly fee of $74.95, with an installation fee of $79.95. And I'd like to offer a renewal after that, permission for the Chair's call.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Secondly, I'll be asking for an agreement with Consolidated Communication of the telephone lines with the Cranberry Township and Madison Streets, with my fee of $210.85 for 24 months, with a long mat to do off it out, permission for the Chair's call.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion. Is there a second?
I have a question for John.
I'm seconding the motion.
Well, I'm seconding, sorry. Okay, I'll second it. Is there any way we can price that out, or do we, the Cole County goes with them, so?
Up here in Butler, it's deregulated. We can't price it out down there, it's not deregulated.
Wow. In Quinney, it's not?
And that division of Consolidated Communications, they're on deregulation.
Thank you.
Or, Butler, they are regulated. Up here, they're deregulated.
Okay, so our options are very limited now, though.
Correct, correct. They are joined with, I think it was Pittsburgh North, they merged with that, Consolidated.
Okay.
They are, they are not law.
Okay.
Because we have our regular contracts up here, like we move a line, it's $45 a month, and that's 72, or $45 to move a line, and I give like $17 per month for that line.
Uh-huh.
And there it's different. Like, I mean, I went through this for about a month, trying to get them to give us the cost breakdown and everything, and that's what it's been regulated down there.
Okay, so we got a choice.
Any choice?
Okay.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. John, I've visited the new DJ's office down there. I want you to please compliment your staff and the fine job they're doing, and of course, a lot of the wiring, computer wiring, and telephone lines behind the walls that you can't see, but the woodworking that Ben and Frank have done down there is just remarkable. I'll compliment them on behalf of the Commissioners for the wonderful job they've done.
I'll do so quick, is there, I'll make sure I get on and see that. Yeah. Thank you.
The next few items under Human Services, Joyce King.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jan Brown of the day. My first item is for the Department of Aging, and they are requesting the Board's approval of a contract between the Aging Department and the Center for Community Resources to manage the Pennsylvania Aging Disability Resource Coordination Grant. It is in the amount of $64,904, and the term is July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. There are no county funds involved, and it is a collaboration between Butler County, Lawrence County, and Mercer County, of which we have been given the funding to manage.
I'll make the motion.
Have a question.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
The next item is on behalf of Jeanne Kennedy for Community Action. There's actually two items. One is to amend a contract with the Center for Community Resources on the Support of Services for Veterans Families. There were some additional funds found, and we just want to expand the contract so that we can purchase more materials to market the program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
And the second item is just an addendum to a current agreement. There was an audit conducted by the federal government on the state, and the contracts that we have with the state have language in there that just reflects that we must follow all federal laws, and they now would like us to list those federal laws. So it's really just an addendum clarifying what we've already been doing. So I ask for your approval.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
My third item is actually on behalf of Donna Janareski and the Drug and Alcohol Program, and it is for a contract with Sojourner House. This is a specialized drug and alcohol rehab program that serves adult women, pregnant women, and women with children. And we only use it when we need it, when we have an identified client that fits that group. So I'm requesting your approval for this particular contract.
Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
What was the question, is that in Butler County?
No, it is not, it's in Pittsburgh.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And the last item is on behalf of Amanda Feltenberger for Human Services, and it is for a contract for, with caped charities for some homeless case management services that's fully funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and is for permanent supported housing and case management services, for the amount of $168,118. I ask for your approval.
Some of it.
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you, Joyce.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next, under Parks and Recreation, Gary Peterson.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Gary.
This morning, I'm here to seek permission to, for the county to enter into a concession, or commission agreement with Lois Peterson for the sculpting of a bronze dog statue for the future dog park at Alameda Park. The cost of the statue is $30,000, paid in three increments of $10,000, ten to commission the work, ten when the statue is in play, and of course, ten when the property, when the statue has been completed. The funding for the statue has already been provided to the county by the benefactors to the dog park. So we do have the funding in hand, and there is no county dollars involved in the purchase of the dog statue.
I'm glad you repeated that twice, no cost to the county. Wrong step.
Thought that was important.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Oh, what kind of a dog is it?
I'm not sure, Commissioner. All I know is it's left paws up, and that you'll be able to come into the dog park, the idea is you can high paw the dog, and it'll set right in, it'll set right in the middle of the main entryway into the dog park. And it's also a limited edition, as far as the statue goes. I believe they're only making like 10 or 15 of them, so.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
The second item is seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Patrick Associates of Hickburg for the preparation of construction drawings, bidding, construction observation for the future dog park at Alameda Park. Again, in the amount of, I'm sorry, in the amount of $48,569. Again, the benefactor to the, for the dog park has already provided the necessary funding to enter into this agreement. Again, there is no county dollars involved in the contract with Patrick Associates.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
I'd like to say this if I could. Yeah, you know, I know we joke around a little bit about this, but I think the dog park has gotten really well utilized. I think it's a great addition to Alameda Park, and we have the space there, and I'm very thankful, and it's with the other Commissioners, that these people are doing this and for our community. When you're exercising your dog, you're exercising yourself, so I can't wait to use it for our dog, you know? I'm looking forward, even though we joke around a little, I think it is a great addition, and I'm sure Gary, everybody in the committee knows that, too.
It will be, because very honestly, in Butler County, there's only one additional other dog park in the county, and that's located in Cranberry Township after Community Park. There's no other location, and the park already gets a lot of usage as far as people walking dogs and et cetera with the, or the apartment building and et cetera around the park, there's a lot of people who just walk out of their buildings and walk across over and use the park and that, so I think they'll look at this as a big benefit. We already have an existing clientele without an additional people who certainly will be using it in the future.
Gary, I concur with what Commissioner Einstein said. This is a valuable addition to our Alameda Park. I would ask that you thank the benefactors on behalf of the Commissioners for their generous donation. I think they want to remain anonymous. If they didn't, we haven't come in here and congratulated them personally, and if they're willing to do that, I would like to do that at some future meeting, but please do thank them in the meantime.
Okay, certainly will, Commissioner. The third item, Commissioner, today is all permission to enter into agreement for professional engineering service with Arcadius for preparation of construction drawings, bidding, and construction observation for a restroom facility in Windfield Township Community Park. The funding for the project is being provided by a Department of Natural Resources grant from the township itself, and of course, from a county park renovation grant that we have provided to the municipality. So in reality, there's actually no county dollars involved also in this project.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
The last item today, Commissioners, is commissioning to agree with the Senate Engineering, again, for engineering service for the preparation of construction documents for a playground area in Potolee Park. Again, funding is being provided by a grant from DCNR, from the fundraising efforts of the local community, and also a county park renovation grant to them. Again, so the other than the recreational grant money, there is no county dollars involved in this project.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Gary.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Under the prison, we're asking for your approval Amendment 6 to the May 18, 2009 Agreement with Trinity Services LSE to manage the inmate group service operation and facilities at prison at $1.296 per meal, and has an increase of .034 cents per meal effective January 1st, 2015. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Can I say something?
Sure.
I went and ate with the work police inmates the other day, and they, Bill reminded me about, they make their own bread and cookies down there, and I was very pleased with what they did there. It was interesting. On the work police inmates, they're approved in this one pod, and they're going out to the, and working at different jobs, or community service. So I ate with them, but they did a really good job with how many bread and cookies, so the, some of the, it's bland, but it was very nutritious. But it was, I enjoyed them.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries.
The first item under Commissioners, today I'm here to ask for your approval of 2015 budget. As you'll recall, Commissioners, the budget was presented on December 10th and duly advertised as to its presentation and adoption, and we, it was on public display for the requisite 20 days, and now, according to statute, it must be passed by the December 31st of this year. There are changes to the budget. During the budget review period, it was noted by the Controller that figures needed to be added to the 2015 expense budget for Fund 40, which is the Emergency Communications and 911 budget. Also during the budget review period, it became apparent that an outstanding note of $1 million that is owed to the General Fund by Sunnyview would be able to be repaid from the remaining balance of Sunnyview's operating account. The repayment of this note will increase the General Fund balance carryover from 2014 by $1 million. And in addition, the correction of a data entry typo is required in Fund 33, which is the Conservation District Fund. The amount shown in the budget is $180,000. It should have appeared as $160,000. So the changes that we have to the proposed 2015 budget are in front of you there. We are increasing the General Fund balance carryover by $1 million in order to account for the repayment of that note. And then, General Fund expenses will increase the increased transfer to 911 in the amount of $455,300, and the remaining balance of that $1 million will go into General Fund contingency. And then in Fund 40, that will increase the contribution to 911 from the county by the And the expenses that are concomitant with that in Fund 40 are to increase the administrative costs of $13,000, increase the depreciation expense of $350,000, and increase interest expense, which is the interest on the 911 portion of the bond issue that was refunded this year in the amount of $92,300. And as you see, the correction in Fund 33 will decrease the line called Transfer from General Fund by $20,000, and decrease in the expense side the contingency line by $20,000. So the resulting changes to the summary of the budget are that the 2015 total budget of all funds will now be $184,206,711. That's an increase by the million. The General Fund budget for 2015 is $61,783,966, again, increased by that million. And the estimated General Fund balance carryover going into 2015 also increases by that million dollars to $7,767,582,000. And also before you are the four resolutions that relate to the adoption of the budget. First is Resolution 2014-31, and this involves the adoption of the budget, and therefore be it resolved that the 2015 Butler County total budget of funds as presented to the Board of Commissioners in the amount, total sum of $184,206,711 is hereby approved and adopted. We would like your adoption of that resolution.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2014-32, the real estate tax millage, therefore be it Therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved, that the county of Butler, pursuant to the authority granted to it by law, hereby levies on all real estate subject to taxation for the county purposes 20.688 mils on the assessed valuation of taxable property or fraction thereof, to wit $2.07 on each $100 of assessed valuation of taxable property or fraction thereof for the fiscal year 2015. And I'll remind the board that this is the same mileage as last year. There was no tax increase this year. I'd like your adoption of this resolution.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2014-33. This is for the Real Estate Debt Service Tax. Therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved, that the county of Butler, pursuant to the authority granted to it by law, hereby levies on all real estate subject to taxation for payment of interest and principal on indebtedness incurred pursuant to the Act of July 12, 1972, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act, or any prior or subsequent act governing the incurrence of indebtedness, 3.94 mils on the assessed valuation of taxable property or fraction thereof, to wit .394 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of taxable property or fraction thereof for the fiscal year 2015. And again, no change from prior year. I'd like your adoption, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And the last item related to the 2015 budget is Resolution 2014-34, which is reaffirmation of Gatsby Statement 54. I'd like to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is
Can I ask something to clarify on the budget? Uh, that, I wrote down here, just so the public knows, and you can correct me if I'm right on this, that $1 million note was for operating funds. That's what that was used for in Sunnyview?
Yes.
Since we're no longer operating, it came back. Now, that money came back to us, we already got that a while ago, correct? It's not in the General Fund?
It's not in the General Fund yet. It's been over in the Operating Fund for Sunnyview, which is again, a different fund from General Fund. And as, since the closing of the sale, we've been working with the Controller's Office, the Treasurer's Office, Solicitor's Office, outside counsel and so forth, to reconcile various expenses, additional deposits, additional withdrawals, and so forth, so that those accounts can be finally closed for 2014. And now that those accounts are very close to being closed, and they will be officially closed as of the end of 2014, there are sufficient funds left in the Operating Fund to make that transfer back to the General Fund of that note or advance that was given to Sunnyview a number of years ago.
It's been, it's just before I get in office, so it's more than seven years old. It's probably 10 or 12 years old, that million dollars, so.
So the goal is to get that transferred back over when this is all set, or when everything's all settled?
Yeah, books aren't closed yet.
Right. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, next item.
Next item is approval to hire Armon Singalani Esquire as special counsel at a rate of $135 per hour. You have a good motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Next is approval to reappoint the following individuals to the Foreign Land Preservation Board for three-year terms, expiring December 2017. They are Roy Andrews of Butler, Robert Burr of Prospect, and William Duncan of Saxburg. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
The next two items are on behalf of the Housing Authority of Butler County. The first item is ratification of the approval of an agreement with PA Housing Finance Agency, or PHFA, for a PhARE grant, that is P-H-A-R-E grant, in the amount of $400,000 for two different projects. First is $300,000 to be real, to be allocated for the owner occupied rehabilitation program, and that's to be matched with $75,000 from the county's Act 137 Recorder of Dean's money. And the second project is $100,000 allocated to the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Program, which is to be matched with $100,000 from the county's Act 137 monies. We ask your approval of ratification.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
The next is approval of letters of support to the PA Housing Finance Agency, again, PHFA, and the Housing Authority of the County of Butler for the Creekside Apartments Project in Jackson Township, along with a commitment of $300,000 from the county's Act 137 monies, contingent upon its successful awarding of tax credits by the PHFA. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
You know, this is where, you know, we've been trying for a long time, Perry O'Malley, and we have an opportunity down here, this is $300,000, if it goes through, that's very well spent. You know, a lot of people work hard and don't make that much money. This will give housing in an area that is very hard to get housing for, for senior citizens and the working class, in the Seneca Valley School District. It's right outside of Harmony. I think this is a really, I, you know, Commissioners, they can speak on this, but I think we're all going to do everything we can to have, this is very good for the community and have this materialized. This, we're trying to make this work, but I think it's a good proposal, and the need for senior citizens, there's going to be both senior citizen housing and workforce housing down there. But the need is tantamount in that area, so this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, I concur with that. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, the motion carries.
And our last item under new business is approval of a quote from Midwest Employers Casualty Company through Raymond James Financial Services for renewal of the county's excess workers' compensation and employers' liability policy at a rate of .2251 per $100 of payroll. The term of the agreement is January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.